Good evening. This is the Tuesday, May 28, 2024, meeting of the Town and South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. First of all, I would invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so Commissioner Gorashi is going to sit for Commissioner Vitari, who is out tonight. And we'll now go on with the public hearing. Will the Secretary please read the notice?
To be published in the Journal Inquirer Friday, May 17, and Thursday, May 23. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, application 24-14P, 235 Pleasant Valley LLC. This is a request for a two-year temporary and conditional permit for the operation of a concrete company on property located at 235 Pleasant Valley Road, A40 Zone. Number two, PZC-sponsored amendment to modify several sections of Section 6.4.10 Minimum Number of VVSE Parking Spaces to clarify the number and timing of required EV-installed and EV-ready spaces, and modify Section 11.8 Appendix H Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment to update EV charger requirements related to equipment, screening, site signage, and EV charger installation illustrations. This was continued from our February 13, 2024, meeting. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk and/or planning department, and online at south windsor-ct.gov. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard, and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff at 860-644-2511, extension 2329. Stephen Wagner, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Before we go on, if you have a cellphone, please silence it. Okay, so we'll now, the way we conduct our public hearings is we first allow the applicant to make a presentation of their application, and then we then hear from town staff, both the planner and the, usually, the town engineer. And then we'll listen to comments from the public, which I will take in any order. It used to be we took them in a certain order, but we'll take them in any order. And finally, we'll hear from the commissioners, and if they have any questions. So when the public comes up and speaks, we don't respond. We don't end up having a negotiation with you. We'll listen to you politely, take notes, and if any of the commissioners have questions about that, we may call you back up for clarification. All right, so we're now looking at application 2414P, 235 Pleasant Valley LLC. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Good evening. I'm Dave Frommson. I'm representing 235 Pleasant Valley LLC. This property was inherited by my wife, and as a result, we inherited some situations on the property. So I'm asking the town to allow us this permit so that we could investigate two things, primarily the best usage of this property, and also that be able to create a condition that this concrete company could be able to stay. He had been present for as long as I've been aware of this property, so hate to see him go. He's a, you know, taxpaying company in town, and like to see if we could create a condition that, that he'd be able to stay and continue operating on the property. One of our goals, I think, is to do some land study, some usage study. There's approximately four acres presently on Pleasant Valley, and our initial thinking is to maybe convert the zoning to a general commercial because of its location, what our neighbors are, the size of the lot. So that's our initial feeling at this point. So it's one of the reasons we're asking for the permit, too, is to figure out what's the best usage.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All right, we'll now listen to town staff. Our Director of Planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. This is a request for a two-year temporary and conditional permit for the operation of a concrete company located at 235 and 245 Pleasant Valley Road in our A40 residential zone. This is an application being submitted because of zoning enforcement activity, a business being operated in a residential zone without any approvals. As indicated by the applicant, they do lease to the Blue Concrete Company and have done so out of the barn slash garage in the back there since about 1994. You should have a marked-up site plan kind of showing the areas marked up by the applicant where it's currently being used. I have a suspicion it was a situation where it started small and it just grew. I think we, it was brought to our attention after a significant amount of trees were taken down behind the Dunkin' Donuts area, and it kind of opened it up to visibility. So that's, I think, when staff first was made aware of it. The barn is located southerly of the existing houses at 235 and 245 Pleasant Valley Road. It's about 200 feet from Route 5. It is accessed through the residential driveway at 245 Pleasant Valley Road, so people come in there, they park out on the site. The applicant has indicated he has about six employees that use the property. They arrive about seven, leave for their work sites, and return about four in the afternoon. So as indicated, he is showing an area of parking, an area of some outdoor storage. Narrative indicates they have six work vehicles and additional equipment that's stored in the garage. The aerial that I just gave you tonight is a fairly current aerial. It was taken in April of this year. You can actually see the fence on it. I did ask about outdoor storage, what's kept outside. Again, our primary concerns are any leachants or anything like that, because it is all just dirt area back there. It's indicated there are concrete mixing tools and water tanks and forms. You can see from the aerial the extent of what's out there. There has been a fence installed, just fairly recently. I think the applicant provided you a picture of that fence and all. So this area has been identified in our draft plan of conservation development as an area of potential commercial node that we kind of identified as potentially looking at that similar to what was done at the intersection of Governors and Route 5. That's something the applicant, again, is looking for some time to investigate and see how a concrete manufacturer can kind of fit into that scenario. So storage yards and concrete manufacturing are not permitted in residential zones, so therefore the temporary and conditional permit requests. The wording is that temporary and conditional permits may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years. Such approval may be given after a public hearing if, in the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will be substantially served, and the appropriate use of neighboring property will not be substantially or permanently injured, and traffic and other hazards will not result from such use. If this application is approved, the planning department requests that there be no increase in the amount of equipment that's brought to the site and encourage the applicant to solve the zoning issue within the two-year timeframe of the approval. There are no engineering comments on the plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So you said there are no engineering comments. At this time, we then go speak to commissioners, and our alternates at this stage are allowed to ask questions and participate. So we'll start with Commissioner Boganski.
I don't have any comments.
Oh, we forgot the public, I'm sorry. Anyway, the public liked to comment on this. I'm glad I have somebody to remind me. Anybody? No? Hearing is seeing none? Okay. Commissioner Boganski.
I don't have any comments at this time.
No comments, question?
Okay. Commissioner LeBlanc, who is here for his last night on our...
Thank you. I don't have any comments.
Okay.
I think I've always started, actually, but thank you.
I just have a quick question. Is the general commercial zone, does it allow for this type of company?
Not without some looking at your use table. You'd have to look at that. The travel service zone was kind of, was contemplated there a little bit, so that I'd have to look at a little bit closer, too. So it may be something in matter of looking not only at the zoning, but also some uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Foley?
I have no comment.
Commissioner...
No comment.
Cavignaro? Commissioner Bernstein?
So generally, I wouldn't be in favor of a zone change, but when I look at this, it seems to me as though it wasn't the proper zone to begin with, looking at what else is around there. The applicant, you don't need to come up front, but you said that your wife inherited this property? She's a former owner of the arena?
Yeah, he should come up, and all these answers should be recorded, so please have him come up.
No, my wife is not, was not in owner of the South Windsor arena.
Okay. I noticed the letter that was sent to us is from Michelle Gregorian.
Correct. She's my wife.
She's not a former owner of the...
She wasn't and never has been.
Those are the only questions I have for you, so the only other comment is, I think this probably wasn't properly zoned to begin with, but in that it is a temporary, two-year request, I would be open to it. So those would be my only comments.
Commissioner Gorashi?
I have one. Do you have any plans to grow the business in any way in the next two years?
I, my, I would say no. I think just the opposite. I think the owner of this business is at the end of his career, so I think the tendency is more for the business to come to an end than to grow.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't have any problem with the current request, but I think we're talking about what we're going to do for a zone change. I'd be very concerned about having a change of the zone for the property, the housing along that, along the road, which is Pleasant Valley Road. So we would, I would urge you to consider, you know, drawing a boundary behind the housing so that the people, you know, across the street aren't experiencing this business. You know, it really bothers me to have these trucks coming in that driveway. You know, I understand this has already been established, and that's the way it's going to be for two more years, but when you're looking at a zone change, we need to figure out some way to make the property that's not the housing viable. And of course, that leaves you kind of stranded, so you might have to work something out with the neighboring property to maybe either get an easement or a section of property.
For which property you refer to, sir?
Who's the neighbor, the neighbor to the east? There's this parking lot...
Yeah, I, we own that. 235 we own. We own 235 and 245.
I think this would be something, would be a different application altogether.
Right. But, yeah, his intent, though, his intent is to come back and, within two years, with a zone change, and I'm just sort of suggesting that, I mean, I personally would not want to see these, this residential street become commercial. On the other hand, I understand that this property really doesn't work as a residential property, so, you know, you have to work something out, and I think you're going to have to get the neighbors involved, at least if I'm still sitting on this board when you come in. All right.
Because I think there's a possibility, too, for the property to be subdivided. I think there's enough footage across the two properties that, that gives us a little more flexibility in what to do there.
Okay. So I have no other comments. Anything else, commissioners? Anybody else? Is it okay to close the public hearing? Oh, wait. Commissioner Cavignaro?
Thank you. So I just noticed this on the aerial photo. I see the parking, and I see it encroaching into the lot of 245 Pleasant Valley Road. I'm trying to figure it out here, because obviously, in the letter, you say that you own 235 Pleasant Valley, whereas most of it, the business is contained to that. However, some of the parking exceeds into 245 Pleasant Valley Road on the aerial photo.
Mm-hmm. They own that property as well.
They own that? Okay. Just want to make sure. I didn't see that on the letter.
So, so there's a lot of the two, there's the two lots that combined, almost four acres.
Okay.
Three and a half to 235, about a half acre to 245, and we own that, that, that whole parcel.
Okay. So I guess then, my, my only comment, now knowing that, is I guess going forward, if you were to come back with an application to do a zone change, and you were to, let's say, have an actual parking lot that is paved, obviously that parking lot would, could not go into 245, since I assume 245 would remain the residential zone that it is currently. So that's my only comment.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:15. We'll move on to the next public hearing. We will act on this tonight, okay? If you want to stick around. All right, so our next application is a... continuation of the public hearing on application, a PZC-sponsored amendment for EV parking spaces. So at our last parking public hearing, it was a request that we simplify the presentation so that the red shows the new stuff, but we don't have all the crossouts from the old. But there were also a number of, I think, of concerns by commissioners of, you know, how did we get here? What are we trying to do in the first place? And so it really goes back to when we first did the, in 2020, when we first made the amendment to incorporate this EV SE, EV chargers regulation. So I have a little slideshow to kind of review that, and we're gonna, this is a, this...
Before you, before you begin, I'd like to make a motion that we table this and defer this until the next meeting. We've talked about this before.
Not seated, but other people can...
Well, I'd like to make my point. Giving us information that's not in the packet for us to consider while we're sitting here in real time is not appropriate. This should be tabled until the next meeting, and for all meetings going forward, if there's something that's going to be on the, on the docket that we're going to cover, it should be mailed and have, and we should all have an opportunity to review it.
Okay, well, you'll have an opportunity to review it tonight, but is there a second to that motion?
Chairman, he's not seated. He can't make a motion.
Yeah, okay, so I think we'll move on.
I, I make a motion that we table this until we have a chance to digest this, and there's a second to that.
Okay, hearing no second, we'll go on.
I, I'll second it, mostly because of the precedent we want to set with new information. I think it's only right, no matter what we're talking about, that we have material or at least a week to look through, so I will second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes. We, we have gone through presentations before in the past with, with developments and projects coming forward, where they have given us, let's say, a paper copy of the presentation, the day of the presentation. While I don't think it's right, I don't think we're ever going to stop that precedent. I, I see what you're trying to say here, but, you know, this has been on the agenda before. A lot of this is public information that has been accessible, and I think we've all been aware that there was going to be a presentation tonight on this. So I'll just leave that as my comment, and we can go forward with the vote.
Any other comments? All in favor?
I have a comment.
Oh, comment? Okay.
Yeah. Can you not... So this idea of receiving information in the packet prior to the meeting was brought up at our last meeting, and, Mr. Chair, you, you weren't able to attend that. I, I like the idea. I like the idea a lot. I would make an exception in this case because you're about to present a PowerPoint to us that will give us, to me, the same opportunity, which is to review it while you're doing the presentation. So I don't have a problem with going through this now, so that would, I would make the motion that we allow the chair to take us through this presentation.
Well, there's another motion on the table, so you can either vote in favor or against. Okay. Anything else?
Can I just comment, Phil?
Yeah.
If, if this is a 12-page slide deck, we can review it. I don't think we're asking to make decisions. So is it okay to just hear the presentation?
Yeah. Okay. All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. No other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, we need a roll call?
Commissioner LeBlanc?
Jesus Christ.
Commissioner Dexter?
Aye.
Commissioner Foley?
Aye.
Commissioner Cavignaro?
Nay.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Nay.
Commissioner Querishi?
Nay.
Was that nay?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Uh, nay.
Okay. Three ayes, four nays. Motion fails.
So the motion fails, and we'll continue with this little slideshow. So the idea here is to bring you up to speed on issues that were brought up at the last meeting, and what this whole thing is trying to do with some new data. So if you'd go to the next slide, please? You all have this in your, at the desk here, right? So the Connecticut statutes back in 2020 were, required us to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. They had an interim target of 45% below the 2001 levels by 2030. More recent Act, Public Act 2225, imposed a 10% EV charging spaces in larger commercial and multi-unit residential parking lots, which we have discussed before. In fact, that influenced some of what's in here. The presentation, again, back in 2020 noted that transportation makes up 38% of the state's emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, and this group that was meeting called the Governors' Council on Climate Change, GC3, recommended reducing the transportation emissions 29% from 2014. In December 2015, we also joined an international zero emission alliance, and the idea was by 2050 to have all passenger vehicles be zero emission electric vehicles. On July 2020, we joined the Multi-State Medium and Heavy Duty Zero Emission Vehicle Memor- Memorandum of Understanding. Again, this is at the state level, and 100% of all the new and medium and heavy-duty vehicles sales by, where, where supposed to be zero EVs. The interim target for 2030 was having 30% EV sales, so that's 2030. 2050 is quite a ways down the road. Please step to the next slide. So Public 20, Act 2225, we've spoken about before, but it just said that on or after January 2023, a municipality shall require each new construction of a commercial building or multi-unit residential building with 30 or more spaces for cars or light-duty trucks include electric vehicle charging stations that is capable of supporting Level 2 electric vehicle charging stations or direct current fast charging stations, and at least 10% of the parking spaces. I would point out that this regulation doesn't yet comply with that in all respects, because we looked at some of the smaller commercial sites and said, people don't stick around at some of these. Lamont also signed that memorandum of understanding, which is detailed there. Next slide, please. So we had in 2225 some new climate objectives, and by the way, I've been using yellow for the new stuff. On or after October 1, 2022, any provision of the declaration or bylaws that either prohibits or unreasonably restricts the installation or use of electric vehicle charging stations in a unit, in unit parking space, or limited common element parking space, or is otherwise in conflict with the provisions of the section, shall be void and unenforceable. So what this is saying is, if you're in a condo development, the condo development can no longer prevent you from installing an EV charger if you have a unit there. Any rental agreement executed, extended, renewed, on or after that same date, a landlord of 250 dwelling units or more shall approve a tenant's written request to install an electric vehicle charging station at a dedicated parking space for the tenant. So again, this is in the Public Act. This is not us. Bureau provided some incentives, 500 to 1,000 for the EV charging equipment and associated wiring upgrades, $200 per year for participating and managed charging events, which basically means the utility can turn off your charger during the peak hours of the day, like if it's, you know, if it's in the 90s and everyone's running their air conditioning, you agree not to have your vehicle be charged until later in the evening or overnight. You can also override that if you have an emergency need to be charged up for a trip you're planning the next day. This has been suspended by EverSource and UI citing uncertain regulatory treatment and not getting timely funding, so they are pushing back on that, on the actual managed charging. Next slide, please. So as of January, I mean, electric vehicles are a growing market share. As of January, we had, as of June 2020, there were only 1,200, 12,600 EVs registered. As of January of this year in Connecticut, there were 27.7 battery-powered electric vehicles and 16,200 plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, which was a 248% increase. So the idea that the market is collapsing is just not valid. DEEP did publish a roadmap for Connecticut in 2020. They wanted to have 125,000 to 250,000 EVs in the road by 2025. We're definitely not going to make that. 20, you know, if we keep going up at the rate we're going, which is about 22% per year, we're most likely to come in around 65,000, 66,000 vehicles by 2025, by the end of 2025. However, this can be an economical choice for many new car buyers, especially if you're willing to take advantage of the federal and state incentives and, you know, buy one of the smaller ones, like the one I bought. I have a Bolt, which, with all the incentives, I got it for, you know, the manufactured suggested retail price minus the incentives brought me in under 30,000. So we're looking for 500,000 by 2030. Not sure we're going to make that. And basically, the idea of this whole program is to provide for and encourage the growth of EVs. Next slide, please. So that one's actually too small for me to read, but this is basically how you calculate your, your savings. So in order to meet 125,000 by 2025, this is a calculation of how that would have to be done. Like I pointed out, we're definitely not going to get there, and, but we are growing at a pretty steady rate. There is an issue of range anxiety, and the whole purpose of our requiring people to install these EV charging stations in various parking lots is to deal with range anxiety and encourage, make people... is to deal with range anxiety and encourage, make people feel safe to buy an electric vehicle and know they'll be able to use it in their day-to-day life. So most of us are going to charge at home. And multi-using housing parking areas will need to be able to support electric vehicles or at a workplace. So one of the things we did in the draft regulation, the original regulation, was to provide the number, we calculate the number of parking, of EV chargers based on the workers rather than on the number of parking spaces. And this is an area where we deviate from the state law. We're coming in much lower than the state law. So any retail place, for example, we ask how many workers you're going to have, and we use that to calculate the 10%. And actually, right now, it's still 7%. Some commercial establishments like restaurants may be able to attract customers by having EV chargers. We see Whole Foods is doing that. Their, their chargers are pretty popular, actually. Other retail may find visits are too short. So if you're going to the dry cleaner and dropping off a suit, probably not going to want to plug in your car. So a lot of these small places, the battery stores, even the fast food places, people are probably not going to want to park their car there and have it be charged while they get their fast food order. So that's why we basically handled this a little differently in the original regulation. The idea here would be also, though, to support solar carports. And I guess we're ready to move on to the next slide. So the zoning can require EV supply equipment in new construction and major upgrades. We can ensure electric chargers permitted as an accessory use everywhere. This is already in the original regulation, the white text. There was a phased report, approach, the required wired or conduit spaces. But the new regulation, you, in the old regulation, you were required to have, and you are currently required to install a certain number of what are called EV-ready spaces, which means you have to run the wiring out to the place where you're eventually going to put a charger in. This draft here backs off from that and says it's okay to just put the conduit in so you're not digging up your parking lot, but you don't have to pull the wire. Our engineering department basically sided with, on doing that because you could end up putting the wrong kind of wire in, have to pull it out anyway when you actually go to install your new EV charger a few years down the road. We require a smaller number of these to have chargers in the short term. 3%, that term is over now, but anything that came in before this year, 7% are required now to have active chargers and 10% eventually in 2028. So in housing, it's based on the required parking spaces, but we allow them to take credit if they have garages, for example, or assigned parking. We allow them to take credit for the parking, the, having the wiring in the garage. So, for example, the new proposed housing over, what we're calling Tempo Two, they're going to have garages, they're going to install the 240-volt wiring in every garage. So that reduces the number of parking spaces they have to provide out in the open parking area. For commercial and industrial, again, we've decided to base that on employee parking rather than the number of parking spaces. Again, we're going in a little easier than the state on that. And those have crossed out that line that says in some situations, except conduits under parking lots, we now allow EV-capable spaces everywhere where we don't have an installed charger. And we do have to include a certain number of handicap parking EV spaces, but we're trying to avoid having too many restrictions on a space. So actually, one of the spaces over at Whole Foods is both restricted for EV charging and for handicap. And Michelle, we need to talk to them, they need to take down the handicap sign on that one. Okay.
Do they have another one that is handicap accessible that's not signed?
No, remember the-
No, I'm just wondering if they're meeting it, you know, they have to meet a certain number. I'm wondering if that's an extra one or not. But I can have Mark, our building official, take a look at it, for sure. Yeah.
So the idea is not to have two restrictions on the same space. Nobody will, you know, virtually nobody will be able to use it. So we're backing off there. And I think that may be consistent with the old regulations. Need to go back and research that. Can you move on to the next slide, please? So this is, you know, basically a picture of what these things can look like. It is cost-effective to have EV make-ready policies. So that's an idea of the utility being able to provide the electric circuits and electric power over the long term. Right now, what we're requiring here does not appear to require any upgrades by the utility, but eventually, they're going to have to be working on their grid to support everybody having an EV charger in their, in their garage. Next slide, please. So we had in the original regulations, a typical layout. There's a new, a new picture in the, in the new regulations, which I would refer you to. And this illustrates both accessible spaces that are not marked handicap, whereas the handicap spaces are elsewhere, but they're accessible in geometry. So this is, I think, a really good idea. And then the picture below is another example of one accessible space on the left and a regular space on the right served by a charger that serves two spaces. The charger on the left serves two different kinds of chargers, the CCS and the Chattanooga-type chargers. So basically, EV charging does require more space. So we have in the old regulations, in the current regulations, we recredit one less parking space for every five EV charging spaces just because you need space for the equipment. So the islands between the charging spaces are, need to be somewhat larger, and that takes away space that you need. Next slide, please. So to pay for these things, it's really up to the person, to the company that installs them. If it's managed, you know, generally, they're owned and managed by the equipment supplier. They usually take credit cards or a special card or fob. Or they may appear on the occupant's electric, electric bill if it's a, one of these garages in a, in a condominium or apartment development. The garage's electricity would just be on your electric bill. We're trying to avoid the burden on the site owner, and any installation costs are helped with federal and state incentives. And they can build the financing into the user fees. Want to move on to the next slide? So this is a summary of the changes we're having in 2024. We're, the EV, basically, the idea is that the chargers need to lead the market. So in order for the people to be comfortable buying cars, we need to lead the market with the charger's infrastructure. So, you know, this is starting to show up along superhighways, that's great, but for people in their day-to-day lives or to go to work or to live in an apartment development and have an EV vehicle, they need to be confident they're going to be able to keep the thing charged. So we have a policy change that we ease the requirement for EV-ready. In this regulation, we now allow EV-capable, which means only the conduit and not the wire going all the way out to the space that isn't built yet. Accessible spaces are not handicap restricted, except in huge lots where there's like dozens and dozens of spaces and they can have restricted EV spaces. The policy change is that even restrictions to EV charging are not required. So we're not even saying that you can only use that space for an EV charger. Now, that's kind of the understanding, that's a cultural understanding, but someone needs to park in one of these spaces, they can. We clarified a bunch of definitions in Section 11.8, which you've seen before. We had a poli, we did clarify the screening requirements of the equipment. So if you look at Whole Foods, they've got some pretty big equipment out there. Wanted to make sure that they understood that should have been, not, not the actual chargers, but the, what do you call it, the equipment where they, you know?
Yeah, the other-
The panels and everything.
Panels, yeah. And that will be-
The what?
They will be screening that this summer.
Okay, great. So we did some simplification of the tables, you've seen that all before. We're not complying fully with the 10% requirement, both with the 7% and basing it on workers, not parking in, in many of the application, many of the locations. There are two versions in Table 6410. One would be to go to the 10% immediately, and the other would be to wait. So version one, version two on this cover page. But it's a minor, a minor difference. The only thing is if people put in 7% install spaces and leave 3% as capable, then we're only getting, we'll probably never see those other three built. So the idea would be, all right, go to 10% now, based again on the workers or whatever the right policy is. We can discuss which one we like or, or not. So the issue before us, I think, is to make these changes or not. It's not, and we have, I think we've had now two meetings on this, so I think it's a question of whether we want to make these changes or not make them. It's incremental relative to what we already have. And I think we can then go on now. I think it's now time for members of the public to comment. Or staff, I guess we go to staff first, right?
No, I have no-
Okay. And engineering? Okay. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Okay. Please identify yourself and sign in.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Lewis. I'm a resident of South Windsor, Scott Drive. I'm an EV owner, I've had EVs for seven years. And I really appreciate the fact that the town has led on this issue and that it's flexible and that the town is considering making these EV regulations align with, you know, our experience, what we've learned and what the feedback is from applicants who are planning to put in parking and new businesses in our town. I think it's really important for us as we talk about the need for accessible charging, for anybody doing any kind of shopping in this town, any kind of business in this town, for people now and in the future to be able to get their cars where they have EVs, to know they can charge them in this town easily. When I look on the free app called Plug Share, which is a national app that tells you where EV chargers are located, it tells you whether an EV is ocu, a charger is occupied or not, how many spaces are available before you pull in there. And in a lot, there are other apps that do this as well, Google's in this game now. And so you're, when you're out there and you're using maps, for instance, you can find the location of chargers as a, as a consumer, as a driver, and you can plan your day around, oh gee, there's chargers there, there's good ratings because they put ratings on there. Does this equipment actually work? What are people's experiences? And, you know, I look at South Windsor, compared to Manchester and Vernon and neighboring towns, and, you know, we've got more chargers now. The fact that Whole Foods put those chargers in is great news for anybody who's coming to Evergreen Walk to shop. If they need to charge their car for 50 minutes, you know, they can run over to Evergreen Walk or into Whole Foods or whatever, and they can get some of their business done, and I think that's a great thing. I also think it's a great thing that, you know, people who live in apartments in this town or who are simply driving by on the highway can find those chargers and get a quick charge. And then they're like, oh, wow, look at this Evergreen Walk, never been here before. I might want to do a little shopping or dining here in the future. So I think it draws in potential economic activity into the town, and it supports our residents across the board. I have chargers at my home, but I've charged at Whole Foods, I've charged up at Walmart from time to time because sometimes I forget to plug in or I need a quick charge because I ran my car down and I need to go out and charge it faster than my home charger will work. And so it's great that I have this flexibility in town and I can do that. So I'm in favor of the changes to the regulations to make these more, I guess, relevant to what our current understanding is of the marketplace and the need to advance it without being too, you know, difficult for business, but also erring on the side of helping consumers lead the market for electric vehicles. And, and so with that, I thank you and I appreciate the time.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Okay, we'll then hear from commissioners, Commissioner Kowashi.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Steve, can I have you come back to the podium?
Sure.
And the reason I asked you to come up is as I'm getting out of my vehicle to come into the building, I believe I saw you get out of a Rivian.
Yes, I have one, yes.
All right, so all-electric truck?
Yes.
You got about 1,000 pounds of batteries in that thing?
It's pretty big, yeah.
You have-
I'm a Scoutmaster and I do a lot of camping and I do a lot of hauling of Scouts and, and I tow things and I carry bikes. And I carry bikes and stuff like that. So, yeah, I decided eventually I needed a bigger vehicle.
So you charge it overnight at your house?
I do.
What level do you have in the house?
It's a Level Two.
Level Two.
That's what most everybody would install.
So what's your experience being outside of the house with getting it charged?
Um, you know, so first of all, I've, I have four EVs. I, I've owned EVs for a long time. My whole family is driving EVs now. Different, I have a plug-in hybrid, a Volt from 2017 that my daughter drives, a Hyundai Kona that my son drives to college. My wife has a Tesla and I, I now have a Rivian. So, you know, that's a lot of money invested in electric vehicles. The good news is people, regardless of the make and model of the electric vehicle, can find charging on the road, not just Tesla. But now Tesla's opened up to Rivian and Ford, and I'm expecting to be able to charge at Tesla's chargers with my car as well. Sometimes the chargers of other manufacturers aren't as reliable as Tesla's chargers, fast chargers. But I'd say for the most part, I've, I've, you know, it's been maybe an irritation, but not a, a deal breaker for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, you're welcome.
So my, my comments in general on this are, while I appreciate, Steve, what you've done here, what we're talking about is requiring developers who are already making significant investments to incur the cost of this additional investment. And we've been down the road with this, we had many meetings where we've talked about this. But just as I've seen things in the news about some decay in the market, and you're saying not so much, and others on this commission have seen other articles, I, I guess, as I sit here now, I'm not really sure where the market is. So I ask myself this question. If we were to do absolutely nothing on this for one year, what would be the downside? And I'll just throw that out to the rest of the commissioners because I'm inclined to do something like that until we have a better feel for if this expense that we're requiring on developers is, is necessary and to what extent. Maybe what we have in the regulations, the proposed regulations is right, maybe it's not. 10%, you know, in 2028, you know, we've used Whole Foods as an example, 400 spots, 40 of them being EV compatible.
It's based on the regu, on the workers, though, not, not the number of parking spaces.
I'm sorry?
It's not based on all the parking spaces. Because of the second table, it's based on the number of workers.
Number of workers?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm on the fence for the reasons that I just expressed, so I'll just shut up and let others chat.
Chairman, could I just respond and just, just to answer your question? I mean, we currently have a regulation in place that is the requirement of anybody that comes through the process to meet. So, you answer what would happen if we did nothing. The regulation would still apply, it's at seven percent now that we're at twenty twenty-four. As they come in front of you, as you're going to see today, they, they're showing them on their site plan. If people don't feel they want to do it, you do have a, I don't want to call it a waiver, but a modification provision in your current regulation. So, that would be status quo.
So, I have questions and comments. I'll have my questions for the public hearing, my comments for new business. So, first and foremost, learning about the statute twenty-two dash twenty-five, I'm curious, it, it is essentially in, either Chairman Wagner or town planner can correct me here, it's essentially saying we need to hit ten percent for, for EV charging spots in the town, is that correct?
That's what the language says, is with new development, over thirty spaces, you need to have ten percent. So, that, you're correct. The, the language that Steve gave you is right out of the--
Okay. I, i- is there a, I guess, a deadline to hit this or is there some sort of enforcement mechanism if we fail to go in that direction?
I don't believe there's anything specifically written into the law that does it, you know, kind of like you're a public act, twenty-one, twenty-nine, I think, had some specific timetables associated with, when you had to act by or certain things happened. This did not, to my knowledge.
Okay. And I guess the very last thing is, I, I guess I'll compare this mandate or requirement to, let's say, housing, for example, and I'll use a comparison here because in order to incur the cost of affordable housing, there's grants to achieve it. Same thing here, for, for, for EV charging stations or EV charging spots, is there any state program that currently exists to either help developers incur the cost to make sure that the project is not only feasible but sustainable for them to say, okay, if, if we want to do ten percent of the spots, EV charging, for example, or more than that, it is feasible now because let's say there's a state grant or something making this possible? Is there anything out there like that, that is possible for South Windsor to, to utilize in the future?
And maybe Mr. Lewis can comment on that, I don't know where--
I'm not an expert on the IRA as it relates to EV, but, you know, the tax credits that are available under the IRA, I know that the administration is trying to incent for the installation of EV chargers. And so, that would be a place to look carefully at what's available to private businesses to do the installations.
So, we do have state and federal incentives for installing this equipment.
And occasionally you do see something come through CROG or something like that for EV chargers, but it's not, there's not a program that I'm aware of that we could send a developer to, to get them.
Okay, yeah. And again, my question is more gauged on, I know there's an e-bike rebate, for example, or something like that, that helps individual consumers, I guess, on a, on a more affordable level, afford e-bikes and I guess expanding the use of alternative transportation measures. But outside of those questions, I, I'm not really confused on anything else, I just wanted to clarify that. Like I said, I have comments. I'll leave that for new business to sort of say what I'm thinking on it and allow, I guess, the microphone to get passed down to the desk here to the other commissioners.
Commissioner Paul, leave.
Well, I kind of like Paul's comments that he made. I'm in agreement with that, that, first of all, the data, you know, what we're hearing in the new, I mean, it could be fake news, I don't know, but they're saying that, that the retailers, the, the car dealerships cannot get rid of these vehicles. And then, but in this, it's saying that there's an increase. I'd like to, I'd like to see more data than just this, I guess, and to, to mandate putting in the charger, I, I'm, I'd be okay with a major innovation or a new project that they accommodate with conduit only, but to force the installation of, I am not in favor. It's just like if somebody had example, I forgot what slide it was about the eggs, bread and butter or something going to a restaurant, well, if they don't have EV chargers, it's your option not to go there. You know, it's just, it's, it's options, it's not a dictatorship. It's if, if you want to go to the Italian restaurant and they don't have chargers, that's your prerogative whether you go or not, but I, I'm not in favor, so.
Nothing really new to talk about.
Got to have an engineer in the crown. Yeah, I got a, I got a list of things. I worked on these at, I worked at ConDOT until a couple of years ago. There's three parking areas on the Berlin Turnpike, on the north of the property, at the entrance and at the south at the motor pool. And I worked in the design for all three of those sites. And this is when all this started coming about and some of the things I ran into, the whole handicap parking spot, I actually came up with one and they, I believe they used it over at the office of State Building Inspector. But one thing to keep in mind is you just know it's not going to rattle these off. You have to pay attention to Connecticut general statutes, I think it's fourteen dash two fifty-three A, and that's for handicap parking. Connecticut goes over and beyond the ADA. So, when you talk ADA and handicap parking spots, you really got to go by the Connecticut general statutes. And it's always ahead of the building code, usually by a year or six months or even two years. There's engineering costs regarding this. This is something that's a burden on anybody who owns property. This isn't something that's simple, all right? It's not like you're going to go to Home Depot and you buy a bunch of stuff and you install it in your front yard. There's a lot to this, all right? So, you're going to existing properties where your electrical service is sort of maxed out, all right? You've got your wiring committee, you've got a two hundred amp service, I know on my house, if I'm going to stick forty amps in my garage, I almost can't do it, all right? So, we ran into the issue with properties needing a second service drop. So, these are things that you can do it. Usually it's two per property, that's ever source and UI more or less have the same rules. They may issue three. This is things that are upcoming with the change in use and electricity and all that, but you can do two. So, these are things that have to be accounted for in the design process under an engineering format for coming up with a charging station. When I say charging station, so you own a larger business and you have ten of them, that's a huge cost that's upfront. Even if you installed dead ends, somebody has to have some design purview of what's coming up, all right? Whether you install six three-inch conduits, you run a service out to the parking lot, then you run your feeders out to where your chargers are, all that has to be accounted for, all right? Otherwise, you're running back home run through a foundation, coring, all that, all right? You have to count anything that's over five hundred feet in length, you have voltage drop, that's typical in designing an electrical system, and those things all come into play. All right? I'm not, even conduit bends, like when you do an electrical service, I think if it's over a hundred and eighty degrees, it becomes hard to pull it. They have a wire to pull on the other end. So, these are things, even if you went, say, a hundred and thirty degrees out to a junction box and now you're going to make four more turns to have your kiosk for charging a car, now if you've gone two hundred and eighty degrees, say, it's going to be hard to pull those wires, trust me, these are number eights, especially for a forty amp circuit, and you're pulling two plus a ground. That's a lot of, lot of pull, all right? I suggest long sweep conduit bends when you do that as opposed to the short ninety degrees like you buy at Home Depot. The chargers themselves, I believe they came out with this now, or breakaway couplings like you do for gas stations, to get the idiot that dries off with the, with the nozzle and the, and the tank. Well, people do it with electric vehicles too. So, instead of pulling the whole thing off its base, those are things that should be accommodated for. And yes, people do hit these things. We had the service plazas on I ninety-five, I was part of that. Tesla built a bunch of stations up along the main service plazas in Darien, Fairfield and so on. But yes, people have come crashing into these things and knock them off the base, things are sparking, you can't access your circuit breakers. So, these are all things that need to be somehow addressed, whether it's in zoning or the building department, because it's coming, all right? So, I see these pictures with bollards, four-inch bollards are great, but it's not going to stop the van. Curd stops are probably the best issue, and we did that actually at ConDOT and all the parking areas there because people have hit those in the first week, they were up. So, separate electrical service, yeah, okay, two per lot, yeah, I think I got it, really. But, thank you.
Commissioner Willard?
So, I'll reiterate this again. This is an unfunded mandate from the state of Connecticut. I'm a prior EV owner, I'll never own another EV again, I've stated my reasons why. This unfunded mandate will cost retailers and all businesses in this town money. That money is going to get charged back to us as a hidden tax in increased prices. I don't know if anybody's been to the grocery store recently, things are a lot more expensive than they were four years ago. I don't want to see another burden placed on us, first point. I've made a number of other points on EV chargers and why I don't think EV is the future. Before I make my final point, I'd like to ask Commissioner Wagner for the source of that PowerPoint. I want to know who wrote it. And I'd like to, I'd like to have that, an opportunity to rebut this at the next meeting. This is why, let me finish my point. This is why we should not have things sprung upon us at the last minute. Your presentation took twenty-one minutes to read. I know how to read, all of us up here know how to read, okay? The material needs to be provided before for two reasons. The first is saves us all here time, our time is valuable. I want an opportunity to be able to consume the information so that when we get here, the meetings are more efficient, number one. Number two, I am a tad bit upset that this gets sprung upon us because there's no, if you're opposing, like I am, obviously, there's no opportunity to rebut the points that you've made. I could have wasted my, my time sitting on the phone here and finding facts that dispute the claims that were made in this PowerPoint, but I'll save that for the next time. In summary, when America converted from horses to cars, the government didn't need to mandate that towns build gas stations, okay? They built them because the public wanted them. It was a business that provided a service, they were able to service the cars, et cetera. When we converted trucks, after Cummins came up with the diesel engine, when we converted trucks from gasoline to diesel, nobody had to mandate that we built diesel stations. It happened organically because that was the right way to go, okay? Anytime the state has to come in or the government is coming in and mandating something, doesn't mean it's, it, that tells me the first thing, it tells me it's not right, it tells me something's wrong. When the government is telling me I have to do something, red flag should go up for everybody, all right? So, I'm going to ask the commissioner, the, the chair, that I have an opportunity to rebut this next time with facts and data. I will present this so it's in everybody's packet before we get here and I ask that we table this until the next meeting. Or to Paul's point, we just kicked the can down the road for a year. We keep fighting on this, I'm, I'm very upset about the last second drop of this thing and, and I'll, I'll leave that alone from this point forward, but I'd also like to make a request in general that we either come up with a policy on the, on the commission that says unless it's in the packet, it does not get presented from this point forward. We'll add that to new, I'd like to ask for that to be added to new business next time, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure that out after how we add that, but I want that on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right, that would be a bylaws change and we can put that on the agenda?
Sure. Bring it up as a topic, yep.
I just had a couple of questions, more around regulation. Are we monitoring some of the changes that other municipalities are doing around EV charging? Like I've noticed in Milford, right, there's different towns even within the state of Connecticut that are now kind of stepping back a little bit because of some of the fires that have occurred around the world. I mean, I think that in London, aren't they looking at the airport there even internally because one car started, how many vehicles on fire and some of the risk? So, I guess from that perspective, like I, I did see that some municipalities around the country are now allowing HOAs who have gone in and said, we don't want EV charging stations within housing developments, just because, depending on how close you live to your neighbor, the construction type and things like that, do we have anything where we're monitoring or any regulation around our building?
I'm not familiar of any municipalities making changes to zoning regulations along those lines, but I'd be happy to look into it and see if we can find any. There's not a lot of EV charger regulations when we went to put them in in the first place, if you recall. There are not a lot of municipalities in Connecticut that had EV charger regulations four or five years ago, but I'd be happy to look and see if, I do get notice of changes when the media, neighboring towns are changing regulations and I don't recall anything recently related to EVs, but be happy to look at it.
Yeah, I think we should take a look at it even what some other states are doing because I do think that some HOAs, some, depending on how close you are to other structures, because reality is, from all the research I've done, is that if an, an electric car catches fire, the most they really can do is watch it burn, right? There are different fire departments are trying to, techniques to pull it out of parking garages or parking spots because you have to just let it burn, there is no way to really put the vehicles out. So, I just think that, to Paul's point, I think you should maybe take a year and maybe do a little bit more research and study and figure out what we're going to do. And I almost suggest that we kind of put a pause on any regulation right now.
First, I would comment that if we don't do anything, we still have the current regulations and I think fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent of the comments tonight are really about the fundamental issue, whether we ever have these regulations in the first place. This is an incremental change to the existing regulations. It actually eases the requirement on wiring, although your comment about being able to pull the wires is a, a question that is really a design issue. And I think maybe they can pull the wires in different sections, I don't know enough about that, but this actually reduces the requirement for wiring that's in the current regulation. So, it's an incremental change. If we don't act on this, we end up with the current regulations. So, I think the first question is, are we better off with this than with the current regulations? And if not, then we shouldn't pass this change. Now, if we want to go back and review the whole concept of having EV charging regulations, that's a separate application. And, you know, you can decide if you want to propose that. Any of us can propose motions to be included in the agenda like Commissioner Willard just did. So, I would look at this, first of all, as an incremental change. Then the discussion over maybe a year would be, do we want to continue having these regulations or not? So, looking at this as an incremental change, are there any other comments here?
This is more of a question in terms of the agenda. We will be acting on this later tonight. I know there's been some comments of saying we should save it for the next meeting. And I also said that I do have comments and opinions I'd like to share, but I, of course, saving that for new business because that's the time and place for it. I just want to ensure that we will reach that agenda item tonight, we will have the chance to, to go more in depth of, of the weeds of, you know, of our own comments. Because if we don't, if we don't, if we're not going to act on it tonight, then I will share my opinions now. I just want to ask.
So, if we don't close the public hearing, then we can't act on it. So, the question will come up in a few minutes, are we, is it time, are we ready to close the public hearing? So, if you want to give your comments in the case that it won't be closed--
So, you're asking to close it when there's information that has an opportunity to be rebutted? That's, am I clear on that?
We're going to take a vote whether or not to close the public hearing, that is certainly a consideration. So, if people do not want to close the public hearing, then we won't close it, but--
I have a question. So, we can't close it for the rebut, for the rebuttal, we have to leave the public--
If you want to have further discussion on this as a public hearing where everybody can participate, including the alternates, then we should not close the public hearing, okay? Now, we've already continued this public hearing twice already, so this is the third So, I don't know, any other comments during the public hearing? Do you want to go on and--
I, I guess I'll go now because I still feel like there's a chance we may not be able to close it tonight. So-- So first and foremost, there has been a lot of discussion on EV chargers the last several months, whether or not EV chargers are on the agenda or not. So I decided to do some research ahead of this meeting, just in case if more articles were, were brought up. Trying to give myself a bit more perspective because I'm not, you know, in the mind of EV charging policy, it's not my expertise. But I wanted to do some prior research before this meeting, just trying to come up with the facts and the numbers. So I'm going to read off a couple of reports, articles that I've, I've seen that sort of, I, I'm not going to say contradict, but give us a wider perspective that, you know, there are multiple opinions and points of views for electric vehicle and charging and I guess the future of the market. So first and foremost, this one is from Forbes from just two months ago. And I quote, "Surgent demand for clean, cheap EVs across the rest of this decade will completely change the global auto industry. By 2035, IEA, which is a source I'll note later on, projects fifty percent of all cars sold globally will be EVs." Personally, I don't agree with that, I think it'll be thirty, thirty-five percent, but again, it will be increased over time. Cutting oil demand between six to ten million barrels per day, equivalent, equivalent to the current amount used for road transportation in the US, the price differential between EVs and internal combustion engines running on fossil fuels has narrowed so fast that upfront sales prices are barely different. With cheap electricity displacing expensive oil costs, drivers can save big by driving electric. New car sales eventually turn over entire fleets and the IEA projects that by 2030, EVs will comprise, compose twenty percent of all cars on the road and the US and EU will be electric." Another quote here, this one is from not only Motor Trend, but the White House. And I quote here, "If you own a home, installing a level-two, two-hundred-forty-volt charger allows for topping off an EV's battery in your garage or driveway each night if you need to." For example, Mr. Lewis stated he has a level-two charger in his house and he has four EVs and that's how he gets the job done. But if you're among the thirty percent, thirty-six percent of people in the United States who live in multi-unit dwellings such as apartment or condominiums, according to the latest US census, you have limited options. Compared to the home EV charging, none are ideal and are typically costly and convenient or both, and serve as barriers to EV ownership for multi-unit dwellers. I made a note here that while it does say thirty-six percent of people in the US live in multi-unit dwellings, you can compare this with the housing crisis as well right now. There's a majority of people that are Gen Z, just like myself, that may never own a home. So there's a good chance that that number could increase over time. Here we go, "A 2022 survey found that some forty percent of shoppers postponed buying an EV until they had their own garage because of concerns about charging. In a study of California residents who purchased EVs from 2012 and 2018, found that one in five returned to a gas-powered vehicle due to inconvenience of charging. And around seventy percent didn't have access to level-two charging at their home or workplace." And, and I guess my comments there are that expanding the use and making it more accessible at, at homes and, and multi-unit developments are going to make it more easier, make it more accessible for individuals to actually expand into the EV market, right? There's a reason why we're doing this and the, and the reason why that we've expanded upon it the past couple of years is that there are many individuals in town that may or may not want to buy an EV, but if they do, there's a good chance that there is a previous barrier where, oh, my apartment complex doesn't have it, or, oh, my workplace doesn't have it. And expanding it, and like I just said, there's a good chance that Gen Z people will never be able to own a home and they'll be more likely to rent or live in a condominium or like that. Expanding that access will go a long way towards climate change. And I guess the very last one I have here is sort of addressing the market entirely. "In the first quarter, sales grew," and this is from IEA by the way, a report from a couple of months ago. "In the first quarter, sales grew by about twenty-five percent compared with the same period in 2023, similar to the growth rate seen in the same period a year earlier, but from a larger base. The number of electric cars sold globally in the first three months of this year is roughly equivalent to the number sold in all of 2020." So again, there's multitude of, of opinions of if the EV market is dying or expanding. I, I know there was a report from Wall Street Journal that I think Commissioner let, mentioned a month ago. And it's, I, I found that report and I also found out that the majority owners of Wall Street Journal is the, the Murdoch Media Conglomerate, which has historically had a bias against electric vehicles. So I do my best to try and find nonpartisan sources here to really get the facts. And I guess the last and not least was sort of addressing the comments made earlier tonight about, you know, gas stations, you know, were developed without the mandate, right? And that is entirely true. The difference however though is that electric vehicles and electric vehicle chargers have the intended goal of addressing climate change. And it's not something we should be waiting around for the private sector to do. It's something where, you know, the pub, uh, public servants and government should, trying to be proactive on this, trying to get a head start before it is too late. I will make a statement that I don't think electric vehicles will save the planet, I don't think they'll be the number one reason we solve climate change. I think in order to do that, you have to hold big conglomerate oil companies accountable and making communities walkable and expanding public transit, but I digress. This is the first step. Car companies and, I, I guess going back to it, the reason why we've seen gas stations built without any mandates is car companies in the past a hundred years, or I guess a hundred years ago, have gone out and done their best to buy up public transit agencies, remove public transit, or at least convert it to buses, to autom, like combustion engine automotive options of public transit. And so at that point, you are really eliminating any other form of transportation except the option of, of combustion engine. So at that point, you had to build it no matter what. And I'll use the example of our own planning and zoning commission a little less than two years ago. We had an application for Drake Automotive at the old Fitness Building. And what happened was you had these groups, these, again, conglomerate dealerships, you had the Connecticut Automotive Retail Association essentially coming in lobbying us and threatening to say, well, Drake Automotive, they went to East Hartford and we sued the town at East Hartford. Now they're here and we're going to threaten to sue you. That's why these mandates exist, to not only hold those automotive and dealership groups accountable, but for, I guess, the public sector to be accountable on this. Because again, the private sector is not going to fix every single problem in our country, it hasn't and it never will. Those are my comments, those are my opinions, and I'll leave it off at that.
So I'll add a, a point to this.
Wait until you recognize, anybody else? Okay.
Thank you Commissioner Cavanero for making my point that this needs to be discussed at the next meeting. You added a bunch of additional data that needs to be refuted. And I will do that, provide it to everybody with data before the next meeting. It'll be included in your packet so we can have a viable discussion.
Okay, I would point out that none of the things that you have cited have been given to us in writing either, so.
I didn't have prepared statements or PowerPoints. The things that I gave to you were researched on my phone and presented, they're part of the public record, just to make a, a counterpoint. But my point stands, if we're going to have a discussion, the information needs to be in the packet before we get here. And that's the, the information that we should be discussing.
Okay, so is that discussion related to the incremental changes in this, in this proposal? Or is it related to the whole idea of having EV regulations at all?
If we're making decisions on this based on discussions made tonight, then that, the discussions that were had tonight in the presentation from both you and Commissioner Cavanero need a response.
Anybody else? All right, now, we have a okay, we have a decision either to close the public hearing or continue it. Any input on that subject?
I make a motion to keep the public hearing open.
Until, to continue it until?
Till, till we have data from Commissioner roulette?
Let's have a specific, a specific date. I mean, we need, we have the what, the twenty?
Fifteenth is the next one?
Just the next meeting.
The next meeting is July eleventh, or June eleventh, but I don't believe you're here, Commissioner, Chairman, are you?
To the next meeting.
You wouldn't be at the next meeting, so.
I will be here on June eleventh.
You'll hear, okay, so June eleventh would be your next meeting, yes.
Oh, is there room on the agenda for that?
Oh, yes, so it'd be, we could put on the agenda.
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to second any other discussion? Again, the alternative is to close the public hearing, so. But we have a motion to continue, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. All right, moving on, we are now done with the public hearings. We did the pledge of allegiance, we have minutes from May fourteen. Do you have any comments on those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May fourteenth.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda, public participation, is there, excuse me. Anybody from the public who would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. We now have application twenty-four oh nine P, Starline Development LLC. There's a request for a site plan approval to combine three lots into one four-point-three acre, acre cycle parcel. Construct a multi-tenant building totaling, totaling thirty thousand two hundred square feet on properties located, located at ninety, one hundred and one-twenty South Satellite Road in the I Zone.
Zip, there we go. Hello everyone, my name is Bill Jodas, I'm with PDS Engineering and Construction and I'm a lifelong resident of South Windsor and I'm also a principal in Startline Development. So I'm here representing Startline Development for application twenty-four dash oh nine P regarding properties at ninety, one hundred and one-twenty on South Satellite Road. So I'll go to the building we're going to do, jump to the site plan. Right there. So, so we bought this property in July of two thousand twenty-three. It's a four-point-three acre property and plan to build thirty thousand square feet, a small incubator, a business facility on it. So we received comments from the building official and the planning department and we agree with all their comments and we'll incorporate them into our plans. There's one exception, the only is we have to file a new deed for a lot line revision. We'll do that after we have, we're sure that all the other submissions are approved. The parcel's owned industrial, the maximum building coverage allowed is fifty percent and we're only at sixteen percent coverage. The maximum impervious coverage allowed is sixty-five percent and we're only at thirty-three percent. The interior landscape area required is three thousand two hundred nineteen square feet and we have three thousand two hundred twenty square feet. So we fully comply with all the coverages. The side yard setbacks allowed are ten feet and we're at a hundred and fifteen feet on the west end and a hundred and thirty-five feet on the east side. The front yard setback allowed is thirty-five feet and we're thirty-seven feet on the front. And the rear yard setback allowed is twenty-five feet and we are at a hundred feet plus a fifty-foot buffer, so just over a hundred and fifty feet. We fully comply with all the buffers, all the setbacks, all the side yard requirements and are not asking for any variances. The back side, which is the, the low eve height of the building, is at twenty-two feet. And the front side of the building, which is on the street side, is at twenty-four foot six, so it's well under any height restrictions. Project is required to have forty-four parking spaces and we're providing forty-seven, including two handicap spaces. And we're providing infrastructure for four level-two charging stations. Providing locations for two dumpsters that will be fully enclosed with a chain link fence. That's jumped this mouse on one there and one over here. Charging stations are in this area right here on the west side. Yes. So we meet all of the requirements for fire truck, truck lanes and fire truck turning radiuses. We've completed the site design accordance with all the Town of South Windsor Engineering Department requirements. We did receive a list of fourteen comments at the end of last week and we agree with all the comments and we'll incorporate them into our drawings with it, when we do the final set of drawings. There's a small amount of wetlands in this area right here on the east side of the parcel that straddles our property and the Unitex parking lot property to our east. It's actually just a man-made drainage ditch, which was probably dug by farmers, you know, many years ago. So it's not really productive wetlands. The upland wetlands, oh, here's the, this faint line here is the upland wetlands area. And we are thirty feet from that, that upland wetlands review line with our building, so we're not encroaching on that. And we meet all the Town of South Windsor Inland Wetland Commission requirements and we did receive their approval last week. So, jump to drawing C five. Right there, this is our erosion control sedimentation plan. During construction, we'll follow all the erosion control measures, we'll have a silt fence around the perimeter and we'll have an anti-tracking pad up here at the entrance. And over here we'll have a topsoil stockpile area with a silt fence around it. So this project, there'll be no large truck traffic foreseen on this project. The tenants are all small commercial businesses, each unit is one thousand two hundred fifty square feet. So there'll be small contractors, electricians, envisioned people who have had home-based businesses that outgrew their homes and needed a, a small place to, to conduct their business, this would be perfect for them. And we have a similar facility in Windsor, Connecticut, and there we have HVAC maintenance firms in there, like sign-making company, chimney sweeper, you know, just a individual person. So there will not be any outside storage allowed on this site, everything will be conducted inside, it's not a manufacturing building. Won't be any, any manufacturing, if there is any manufacturer, it'd just be like hand assembly of maybe cabinets or something like that. So I'll jump to our site lighting plan. So, yeah, it's a very conservative site lighting plan. We only have wall-mounted fixtures on the back of the building and they're all full cutoff. Probably can't read this, but along, along the woods line, we're down to zero foot candles. So really sensitive to making sure no light goes off to site to, to the neighboring properties. And those lights will all be dimmed seventy-five percent at all times. The only time they'll go to full brightness is when they're activated by our motion detectors that we'll have in the back of the building, so that's the only time you'll see full brightness is when someone's driving through there at night. Other than that, it'll just be, they'll be dimmed by seventy-five percent. There'll be no major sound escaping from the building, like I said, there's no manufacturing in the building. We're not going to do any outside manufacturing, no outside storage, everything's contained inside the building. There'll be no multiple tractor trailers left outside idling, giving off noise. It's all just small businesses. So, go back to the rendering. So we've gone with earth tone colors, green and, and tan for the building to blend. So we've gone with earth-tone colors, green and tan for the building to blend in with the surroundings. And I think it's a great use of the property. It's a win-win. The town will gain tax revenue, but it's not gonna add any burden to the school system. So I think it's a good project. This is industrial area, and it's a building that fits right in with all the other buildings there on that street. So that, like to turn it over to Randy Becker. He's the engineer who did all the site drainage design and all the drainage calculations, and he can answer any further questions. And he'll go over the landscaping and all the screening work that we're doing with the property behind us. That's all yours, Randy.
Good evening. My name is Randy Becker, and I'm a professional engineer. I work for PDS Engineering Construction. And as Bill said, I did the drainage design, and we were approved by the Inland Wetlands Commission. But briefly, the water that will be flowing from the property is fully contained in a detention basin, which is on a couple of the drawings. So we have this shallow basin here. It's not, it's only about three feet deep. And the amount of storm drainage that'll go in here, it'll collect essentially all of the roof drainage, the parking lot drainage, and pretty much the site drainage as well. We have these leak-offs that go into the basin from the parking lot. They're just stone openings in the curb. And so it will contain the water, won't be any water decanting out into neighboring properties. There were some engineered recommendations or comments from the engineer which we are addressing, and we are taking those into account. Minor things like lowering the grate top of frame on the detention basin outlet box. So I had all this extra volume in the basin, and we don't really need it anyway because the elevation of the Hundred Year Storm is sixty-seven point seventeen elevation. And the contours around the, especially around the back side of the basin, is sixty-nine. So we can certainly lower that. We can lower the frame six inches. Those were some of the comments. Sidewalk up front with the tactile surfaces at driveway entrances and so on. And so what happens is the flow goes into this outlet structure. Okay, so it's a concrete structure with a twelve-inch opening, and it has a pipe, I'll look on a different drawing here, show you. Has a, has an outlet pipe that ties into the existing storm drain system, but only after, from, starting from a ten-year storm. So most of your storms are inch or less. So very infrequently will actually flow into this, into the existing storm catch basin. Therefore, we have all this area for it to infiltrate back into the ground. And this was one of the things I mentioned to the Wetlands Commission. They approved that concept. I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a good idea to do that. The engineer suggested a riprap overflow spillway on the back side of the basin. I have no issue with that because the invert of that riprap will be higher than the Hundred Year Storm. So it would have to be something greater than a Hundred Year Storm for it to even flow into an emergency situation. So there's really no there was really no issue with the drainage being contained. As far as buffer, we plan on, let's see, there's a landscape plan in here. Okay, so we plan on introducing some native tree species sort of at the end of our buffer, just to make sure if there's any openings in trees, we'll have to field locate them. Right now, they're just shown conceptually. There are gonna be shade-tolerance species that live in the area. We're gonna plant additional for understory just to ensure that the mature tree canopy is fifty, sixty feet in the air. So in order to ensure that the neighbors to the south are protected or from vision as a buffer, we are going to plant, and these are just conceptual here, these groups of trees. They'll be set out, we'll work with the town town engineer or whoever, Wetlands people, whoever would like to be involved with that process, and we'll actually field-stake where we believe that these shrubs should be going, okay? All of this buffer here, this fifty feet of trees is, there are mature trees, oaks, birch, maples. So they're, they're gonna be undisturbed, and you know, there's a pretty dense amount of wooded area even on the side of the other, the other property. So it's, it's a pretty densely wooded area. We're just doing that as an extra caution. In addition, we have some landscape trees that'll be up front and also in the islands in the back, just as additional landscaping. The rest of the area will be lawn area, okay? The site is very flat. If you've been by there, it's very flat. There's not much grade change. So in order to drain the front lawn here, we've elected to raise the foundation a couple of feet in the front, even though the finished floor is still gonna be the same. We'll raise that front foundation so that we can create a ridge, so to speak, and have the water drain off and away from the building. So we'll have positive drainage away from the building. Other than a few other things about handicap spaces and some, some concrete details, that's really the only other comments that were brought up. I do, I did a, this is probably going into a little more detail, but I did a pre-development stormwater flow. For the Hundred Year Storm, for example, if you could imagine this, we have almost eight inches of rain, seven-point-eight-one inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour duration as a Hundred Year Storm, okay, in, in this area. And the flow coming off the property without any development at all. And this is even with water that percolates in the ground because it's a fully, fully pervious area pre-development. And I'll just throw this number out, eleven-point-two-three cubic feet per second. And post-development, because of the detention basin, a Hundred Year Storm, the outflow is one-point-one-seven cubic feet per second. So we're greatly reducing with this detention basin. And it will be fully grassed and maintained. It has a sump in the outlet box, so any sedimentation can be periodically cleaned, and that's in our plan as well. We have some comments about owner maintenance. So it's, again, a ten-year storm will flow point-one-three cubic feet per second out of the basin. It, it's, it's not very, not a very big flow coming out of there. So if there's any questions, I can answer whatever you'd like.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If any of the commissioners have questions, we'll call you back up.
Sure.
So now for our town, our assistant planner, Mr. Russo.
Thank you. The applicant has addressed a good amount of items brought up in our report. However, I'd like to touch on a couple of things. The buffer design, per our regulations, is required to be designed by a licensed landscape architect. This one is not. Town staff did distribute the fire maneuvering study to the fire marshal for review. Parking lot landscaping requirements have been addressed with a minimum of ten percent interior landscaping. As noted, there are regulated wetlands on site. IWA approved this application on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and a bond shall be collected in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to ensure proper placement and maintenance of erosion and sediment controls, and twenty-five thousand dollars for the installation of stormwater structures. Public water and sewer are available. Water Pollution Control Authority approval is required. And this application has yet to be reviewed by, reviewed by ADRC due to the inability to have a quorum at the last scheduled meeting. The tentative meeting date is now June sixth, two thousand twenty-four. If this application is approved, in addition to the modifications mentioned, the planning department requests a new DB filed combining the property.
I do have a couple engineering comments if you want me to share those from Jeff Doolittle. As indicated, he did provide some laundry list of some minor items to be addressed to the plans, but he asked me to read a couple into the record, particularly to show the sidewalk along the front of the site connecting the existing sidewalk to the east. He comments that the site is flat and grading the plan is difficult to interpret. Provide additional spot grades along the front of the building and the driveway and parking spaces, so these areas drain. Show grading, so the finished ground slopes away from the building, which I think was mentioned. He also mentioned that stormwater management report needs to include calculations for existing pre-development stormwater flows off-site for the two and a Hundred Year Storms, and I think you were referencing those tonight. So as the applicant indicated, he's intending to address Jeff's comments, so we'd recommend they be incorporated into any final plans if the commission approves this. And I just wanna make one comment about the buffer, just for the record, more than anything else. You may recall with our latest regulation changes on the buffer, this is one of the areas in town where a fifty-foot buffer, where the industrial and bata residential zoning was protected, if you will, because it's an existing subdivision where the buffer had been previously established at fifty feet. Normally, today, you would have a seventy-five-foot buffer where the industrial and the residential zone meets under current regulations that we changed just last year. But this is protected at the fifty-foot buffer, and it is heavily wooded out there, but with the situation, so similar to what we did with the Unitex site plan, we'd recommend that we work with the applicant at the time of installation just to try to locate trees the best to provide the screening out there. So it is up against the South Windsor Woods development. One of the last legs of the development kind of juts out. And what you see to the shaded area to the west of the property is an emergency access coming out of the South Windsor Woods. It is a gated emergency access point. And there's a sidewalk all along South Satellite that will be completed with development, so.
Okay, so we only hear from the seated commissioners for something at this stage of the meeting. So Commissioner LeBlanc? Do you have any comments or questions?
No comments, thank you.
I, I do have a question. I think you may have answered it, Michelle, but I wanna make sure because there is this, looks like a dirt road coming from South Satellite down to Peppin Place, I think it is. You said that's an emergency?
It's emergency access for fire or, yeah, it's a gated, and there's a lock and everything.
It's deeded?
Gated.
It's gated, I see. Okay. And does that flow through the property that you own, Bill?
It's on the west side of the property, correct?
Okay, okay, okay. That was my only curious.
Small request, Bill. On the street trees, you guys have zelkovas, which are more like a parking lot tree. Is there any chance we could get those swapped out for like some platinus, London plains, or something like that, some more majestic street trees?
Please come up to the microphone.
Zelkova was something that we recommended because it doesn't grow to a massive London plain tree or sycamore size, and it's just a little bit more of a, we're not looking for shade there. We're just looking for a nice look, somewhat shorter than the height of the building. All the other trees are, you know, two, three times the height of the building. We can change the species. I mean, if there's a particular recommendation, I just wouldn't go anything so, so large with, you know, a London plain tree or, or platinus, you know.
Your, your span across that front lawn is, I'm a skilled ruler with me, but it's thirty-five foot front, right, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct. And most of it is lawn. A large shade tree would maybe choke the lawn out a bit, would be a little bit more of a maintenance problem. I am a licensed landscape architect in New Jersey, not here, so I can't really claim that in Connecticut. However, we could put nice mulch beds around, you know, circle around the, make it look neat. If you, if we had, say, maples or oaks that are there, in short order, they'd be toward in the building. We're just looking for the lawn trees for look. But we will, we will consider any recommendation that, you know, that the commission makes. I just wanted something that was a little bit more ornamental.
The vase shape of the zelkova along the street just doesn't fit. Normally, they're inside parking lot islands. That's where the zelkova belongs.
It's not a real, it's only thirty-five feet. We have a big lawn, you know, thirty-five-foot lawn is not so big. But we wanted trees that we can maintain easily and ring and still have the lawn and not have all this leaves and, again, the height of a tree, for example, the London plain tree was mentioned, that's a huge, huge tree. I know, I love them for street trees.
I know.
It's not really a street tree. It's more of a lawn tree, if you would. But, you know, it's, you know, I grew up in a neighborhood, we had all those London plain trees and sycamores, and they became a problem with wires. I know these are underground wires here, but they became a problem after a while with just maintenance and the size of them, trying to grow grass under them and all that stuff. So we could use poa trivialis for seed, but, you know, we prefer just use a fescue and bluegrass blend. If, you know, if there's any suggestions about different species, I'd prefer to have a ornamental-type tree rather than a shade tree.
How about, how about instead of just having six tree or, I think it's, yeah, one of the renderings that showed two trees coming in on that west side. That picture there shows only one at the side entrance. And I know I'm kinda wasting time here, you guys think I am, but I'm kinda passionate about this. But if we, could we do festigent hornbeam? Festigent, what I'm talking about?
Yeah. We could do.
You're stuck on it, you're stuck on it. I just.
We could, you know.
I'd like, I'd like to densen it up. That's a big, it's a long building, a lot of, a lot of wall to look at. I was trying to block some of that with the sycamore idea, but we're not gonna break your bank.
No, it's not, it's not about that. It's really, we didn't want these huge trees in front of the building. It's more of an ornamental, but again, if you have any, you, you know, hop hornbeam, hornbeam, American hornbeams, something like that.
We kick this around another, still vote on this, but can we do?
We will definitely consider a different species.
We'll do, we'll do staff level. I'll come in and we'll.
You know, I'll tell you what, when we
I don't wanna take it with this time.
If, if you, if you were, for example, you were the one that was gonna help us locate some of those other shrubs.
What if I give you like three choices, other than, other than zelkova?
Okay, that's, that's great. That'll work, that'll work.
We're good.
Okay.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Coverner, Commissioner Burns, please.
With the acoustics in here, I may have missed this at the beginning, but how many tenants and what type of tenants are we, are we thinking about here?
There's twenty-four spaces.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, and they're twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet per space, single-story, with a garage door and a, and a, and a regular door, and a bathroom, and a place to put an office desk. And it's for small businesses that it's, there's no retail, there's no, there's no storage, there's no chemicals.
No manufacturing.
No manufacturing. The only manufacturing may be if somebody had like a No manufacturing, the only manufacturing may be if somebody had like a wood shop or something, they were building cabinets, or that sort of thing, technically, that's manufacturing, but we're not talking about, um, machinery, uh, you know, belching smoke out and having, you know, uh, you know, furnaces and everything else, or, you know, creating, uh, combustion in there.
Guy shows up, opens his garage door, goes to work.
It's pretty much...
Freight hours, then leaves.
It's what I would love to have, you know, as a small business, years ago, I did roofing and siding business. I was like a, you know, me and, me and my friend, we did roofing and siding, and then I got into landscaping. So that's not really conducive to landscaping, for example, 'cause you need room outside for stuff.
Yeah.
Mulch and dirt, that's not, that, that's not what kind of business would be here, it would be, you know, somebody has a, a plumbing company, or electrical company, uh, small, small cabinets, uh, uh, could be, uh...
But it could be the, so there could be commercial businesses?
They are commercial businesses, but they're not necessarily retail.
Possibly plumbing supply, where they're...
It could be a plumbing, not supply, more or less, it's where the plumber would keep his goods.
Okay.
So he's going out to different jobs, he needs a place to put his stuff, his tools, his pipe, his fittings, his...
I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense for the intensity of activity.
Yeah, so the, the intensity would be, you know, they're all in their own space, there's no outside activity, it's, it's inside the space, um, there's not gonna be customers coming in, like, for retail to buy stuff, something like that, it's, it's a, it's, uh, it's commercial.
Okay, I get it.
But it's, it's small business, uh, spaces that, you know, somebody outgrew their garage at home.
So, um, leads me to another question, Michelle, was there a public hearing on this?
No, this is a site plan, so a site plan does not require a public hearing unless the commission decides it is a great public interest and requires a public hearing. Having said that, what I wanna make you aware of, with, again, with your latest regulation changes, if there's any kind of automobile usage that wanted to go in here to do automobile repairs or something like that, that would be by special exception, that would require a public hearing. So we did look at some of those uses, and we were looking at the use table fairly recently, um, uh, if it was storage units, it would have to go through public hearing. So you did caveat some of the uses next to residential zones that were of a larger size, so, I think forty thousand square feet was a threshold, this is thirty thousand square feet, so you're not at some of the other thresholds you have for public hearing.
So, what caught my eye is the image, um, that I have in the packet, and the number of residences within five hundred feet, and I'm surprised that none of these residents...
They were all notified because of the wetlands application, and we had, um, we did speak to the maintenance company, or management company, and explained the project to them, so they were all fully aware of it, I believe one individual showed up at the wetlands hearing and was concerned about where it was, and once they found out it was further west, they didn't care. Um, again, this isn't really right directly behind a lot of the houses, you know, um, it's one kind of leg of it, but, um, they were notified and they all were told where to look for information, and we heard from one.
Okay, that's all I have.
I'm sorry, it's actually two hundred and eighteen feet away from the other building. Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Gorashi?
Okay, this may be a stupid question.
Yes.
But for a business, for a, building this land, are two dumpster spots normal on each side, each end?
Yeah, 'cause we're not, we're not expecting, uh, Bill, maybe you could address that, you know, why only two dumpsters, uh, we, we, we don't expect a large, uh...
Yeah, these, 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 uh, customer, these kind of tenants don't produce much trash at all, it's mostly maybe what they have for lunch that day, they're not, their businesses don't produce a lot of trash. We have a, a, a business or a property like this in the, in Windsor, and, um, they just have two small, uh, three-yard dumpsters there, and that's, that's all we need for that property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, I noticed that you are just putting in E V ready, but the regulations require installed, a certain number of installed, uh, E V chargers?
Yes, we have four.
What?
Four.
They're gonna be installed, or...
They're gonna be, uh, conduited.
Okay, but...
We're gonna have a prep for it.
No, you need to have a certain number, what's the number two, um, E V chargers here also, among those four, and one of them has to be, uh, an accessible space.
We, we do have that, we have, uh, four, uh, level two.
Four level-two chargers, and one is in an empty apartment space.
Okay, so you're actually gonna install chargers?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the infrastructure.
Infrastructure four.
That's, that's not what the regulation says. Okay, you need to comply with the, the regulation. Okay, um... That's all I have, oh, yeah, can, can people double up with, like, if they want two of these units, is there a hard wall there, or what, what do you have that, uh, would allow someone to say they need two, or they just grew a little more?
Uh, yeah, if somebody wanted two units, that, that would be fine, um, there will be two firewalls down the length of the building, 'cause, uh, the maximum we can go is twelve thousand square feet between firewalls, so we'll have two of them at third points in the building.
But anywhere else in there, they could double up?
Yes, yeah, that would be fine.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other comments from commissioners, or questions? Staff, alright?
Just that we are, you know, gonna be recommending, it does go to design review, we have a meeting, and I would assume design review won't have too much comments, but if there's anything of any significance, we'll bring it back to the commission and just make you aware of it, I just didn't have enough people to hold a meeting this past month.
So you're recommending we go ahead and, and go on?
Yeah, and we do, yeah, we'd rather have the design review take a look at it, um, they usually do a nice job, um, looking at the colors and whatnot, so I'd like to keep that as part of the process.
I gotta ask one question, it's probably for Bill, and I'm just thinking ahead with all those E V stuff going on, when you say you're gonna rough in four E V locations at the site, how are they powered, is there a house meter for this whole building, or is there individual meters for each tenant, like, how would you power those four?
It would be an owner's meter, it would power those.
Okay. Trying to set the precedence moving ahead, but these are things that should be ironed out, let me look at these things, but, thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Well, actually, uh, the, the supplier, the E V charger could bill the user directly, and that's how they, they would pay for the power. For one alternative, at least, I mean, it's also, out of the kindness of their heart, they wanna, uh, provide free charging, that's, that's their choice. Uh, I think a motion would be in order at this point? No, we don't have it with us, okay, that's...
I added two comments to the draft, one about the E V charger, then the other about field locating landscaping in the buffer.
So anybody can make a motion?
No, you're not seated, or you, you are seated, would you like to? Uh, I make a motion that we approve, application twenty-four oh nine P, with the, uh, standard requirements, what is it, one to ten? I don't have to read?
Read number, uh, read number three and four.
Uh, so one to twelve, and then thirteen, light fixture photo cells and dimmer...
Excuse me, you need to read three and four, though, 'cause they got details.
Say again?
Number three and number four, please read it.
Number three and number four?
Yeah.
This application is subject to the conditions of approval of the inland, inland wetlands agency conservation commission, including bonds in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to ensure proper placement, maintenance of erosion and sediment control measures, and twenty-five thousand dollars for the installation of stormwater structures. Four, a landscape bond in the amount of five thousand dollars is required and must be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy if work is not completed. You want the rest of them?
And then go on with number thirteen.
Thank you. Light fixture photo cells and dimmers will decrease light levels by at least seventy-five percent one half, one hour after the end of normal operating hours as established by the commission, fourteen. A new deed shall be filed in the land records combining properties ninety-one hundred and one twenty South Satellite Road. Fifteen, final plans must incorporate all, all applicable comments provided by the town engineer, building official, and the architectural and design review committee, sixteen. Final buffer design must be prepared and stamped by a licensed landscape architect, seventeen. Vehicle maneuvering plans show, showing fire truck turning and movement shall be submitted, eighteen. Final location, uh, of understanding, planning in the buffer area to be filed, located with town staff, final, located by town staff, uh, and E V charger required must meet requirements, requirements must meet requirements.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh, now we can move on to, um, application twenty-four fourteen P, two thirty-five Pleasant Valley LLC.
I like the motion to, uh, approve, uh, application twenty-four dash fourteen P, twenty, two thirty-five Pleasant Valley LLC.
Do we have the actual motion, uh, that she wrote out?
Come on, alright, you have the following stipulations? Request for a two-year temporary conditional permit for the operation of a concrete company on property located at two thirty-five Pleasant Valley Road, A forty zone, uh, first condition is a temporary and conditioned permit will expire on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, and the site should be brought into point, brought into zoning compliance before that time. Uh, two, if there are buildings, structures, signs, or other items that require a building permit, or other town approvals or permits, all such approvals or permits must be obtained prior to construction or use of the site. All freestanding signs and/or building signs require the issuance of a sign permit before they are erected.
Okay, any discussion of the motion? We have, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously? Alright, now I've lost my copy of the agenda, don't wanna leave anything out. Uh, do we have any bonds?
We do, we have two landscaping bonds and one subdivision bond, I'll read them one at a time. Uh, landscaping bond, twenty-two dash zero six P, People's Bank, amount five thousand, reduction five thousand, a balance of zero, and then twenty-two dash forty-six P, Michelle's Power Yard, amount five thousand, reduction five thousand, a balance of zero.
Second?
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously?
We have one more bond, the subdivision bond, uh, twenty-two dash zero four P, Chestnut Ridge subdivision, amount eight hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred ten dollars, a reduction of seven hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred ten dollars, and balance of a hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars, and there's an asterisk to note that maintenance, maintenance level to expire in one year, five dash twenty-eight dash twenty-five.
Okay. A second, anyone? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously? Okay, now, do we have any old business? Michelle? Okay, any other business? Oh, okay. Um, any correspondence or reports? Oh, we're getting nowhere.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, is there a second, second?
Oh, I actually wanna make a, a comment or a quick report, if I can.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I know other commissioners are going to, to say it, but, uh, you know, best of luck, Mike, you, I, I had a phenomenal time serving on the commission with you, uh, working together with you, I was, been on for almost three years, and, uh, when I didn't know anything, we were sitting next to each other, I'd rely on you sometimes for information, uh, like I said, I enjoyed serving with you, and I wish you best of luck.
Uh, thank you, Alan, appreciate it. Yeah, thanks, everyone, it was, uh, you know, it was a pleasure to serve the town, and, uh, you, you try to be the voice of the people who elect you, and, and, you know, you, you try to do good for the town, and, uh, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of volunteer, and, uh, you know what, it's, it was rewarding, and it was, uh, eleven years of time, and, uh, yeah, sometimes you have to call it a debt, and I appreciate everybody who's here now, and those who, you know, came before me, and, uh, it was a lot of fun, and, uh, thank you.
Okay. Now we have a motion to adjourn, and, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at nine oh five. Oh, okay.